Calling the meeting to order, please rise and join me in the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome, everybody.
Looks like I don't have a microphone, but that's okay.
Here, you want some of mine?
Okay.
There we go.
We can grab one of the student ones.
All right, welcome, everybody. Thank you for being here, all two of you. And Leanna Woods, one of our student reps, is meeting with she's having dinner with family from out of state tonight, so that's why she's not here. Not sure about Aleah, but she might be on and off and away to college.
Stanford, yeah.
Yeah, and we do have a new student rep that's coming on board. His name is Morgan.
Thomas?
Thomas. So hopefully, we'll get to meet him in the next couple of months.
He's going to plan on joining us in the September meeting at the start of the school year.
All right, thank you. Right now, we are at approval of the agenda.
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as given.
Is there any discussion? No? All five of us are here, this is exciting. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Public comments on agenda items, Jackie, were there none? Okay. So now, we are at student board member comments, and there's none of those either. Board member comments, Arla.
Yeah, I had the pleasure of attending graduation on Friday, and it was a wonderful ceremony. It was so exciting. And the speeches were really great this year, really. Leanna and I choked up at a couple of them. Yeah, it was just, it was so exciting. I love graduations, so that was really cool to be a part of that. Other than that, I've just been involved. The marketing subcommittee for the levy committee has met in person in the last month and been a part of those discussions, and that's been great. And also attended some of the virtual levy committee meetings that have also been going well, so that's my update.
And Art.
First, I'd just like to say, like you already did, it's really nice to have all five of us here. In a certain sense, that makes us whole again, which has had meant, had meanings for us in the past, different meanings for us in the past. Anyway, I don't have very much to report other than, because I did not get to go to graduation for the first time, and I don't remember how, I mean, there were a couple I missed when I was first on the board. But that, back then, we didn't all go on those graduations. And then, but in our time, the three of us who came, you know, all together, this was the first one I missed. And I missed it because the Girl Scouts are reopening, and I had a whole bunch of people that I had to check in, and the people that would normally, I could find to substitute for me, were unavailable or drafted elsewhere. So I was out of luck.
Well, we missed you.
But thank you for telling me how well, how it went afterwards. So I missed that. But other thing, the only other thing I really have done regarding the school stuff is also quite important, and I have somewhat to thank, not just myself, but all the other people who were helping with me with scholarships, including Tom Warland, where we were doing after the fact, the interviews for kids who don't do scholarships, who get an award that's named for a former teacher, Gordon Monten, who gave the Kiwanis Club a whole bunch of money to support kids for regular scholarships, but also for awards. He said, "Don't use the word scholarship," but awards for kids who are not going to college or doing something else, trade, you know, careers, et cetera, et cetera. And we interviewed several kids, and we selected four. And we have four of those that are receiving awards that were not part of the award ceremony that happened during the last, before the last board meeting. But that was the work that I've been doing, and that's, I have to tell you, that is fun work, as Tom can also attest to that. Interviewing those kids, we did it right here, and one of them was on a telephone call. It's just really fun. Get, you get to know somebody more than just a piece of paper or whatever. It's, it's very rewarding. So that's my report.
Okay, thanks, Art. Leanna.
Well, two things. So the graduation, we were on the wet end from crying, and that was it. It was amazing, and I was so happy to see them getting to sit down and not have to do the walkthrough and that. I know fifth grade, my son graduated fifth grade, and they did do a walkthrough, well, they actually didn't do a walkthrough. They drove up, we drove up, and then they passed their stuff through the window, and they got a little necklace, and I cried through the whole thing. And I'm such a weiner, but we got to the end, and he was like, oh, and some kids got to meet at the end, the friends. They went off and took pictures, so I'm kind of sad that he didn't get to meet up with them. But he is ready. My second thing was that we made an appointment with Mirka Kerstad over here at the middle school, and met with her for, me and him, just alone, nobody else was in the school, and we got to tour the whole school, just room by room, everything, and he was so excited. I mean, when we got there, he's like, "Mom, this is all you. You made me do this, and I really don't want to do this." And we got in there, and we got through everything, and got to see the math room and the science room, and he was nuts, he could not wait to see those. And then, language arts and like artsy stuff, he's, I don't know how he ended up, my son, he's not, not into the artsy and the writing, but through the whole thing, the payoff was, my long story shorter, the payoff was, the day after, he's sitting in his bedroom, and he calls me in there, and he just wants to tell me how excited, he goes, "I am so excited for middle school." And I cried again. So got the Mother of the Year Award on my wall now. So it was very exciting, so, yeah, we're done with elementary. He's, he's very mature for a young man, and he likes to build computers. He does it by himself, and just puts them together, and I'm, thank God. He's interesting, so.
Well, thank you.
That's it.
John?
Well, I got two, three things to report. One, I still don't have anything on the screen. It says, "Microsoft update required, update teams," so whatever that means. So the first thing is graduation. Friends, I just got to tell you, I have, I'm a veteran of many graduations at many different schools. I thought this was a class act. It was really, it was, of course, it was a first for us. I mean, I was really proud to be there. This is the refurbished state stadium. And it was clear leadership to call it. We're going to war no matter whether it rains or not, you know? And so I thought that that was great. It just looked nice. It was really university class. You know, I've never had a university with, graduated on the football field, it was so good. And then there's that, we got that mascot out there. And when people come through the thing, people, this isn't the century first ceremony, but there are some medieval ceremonies on which I am reactionary. And I really think there is a place for dignity in education, and this is it. And we can have it marked, we can have it marked with levity, and there was plenty of act, and it wouldn't, you know, so it's not too stiff. But I thought the ceremony was exceptionally well planned and exceptionally well executed. And I say that as a veteran of them, seen these things at three different universities, and this compares with any graduation I've seen. So I think our team did a splendid job. And I thought the kids were great. You know, that it was, you can't get rid of the seriousness, and that was observed. But the levity is part of it too, we're human beings. And I wrote up a little, took a bunch of pictures and wrote up a little thing on Facebook. Man, I got thirty-seven likes. And I just thought it was great. So the other thing is I got a report from my minder, otherwise known as my spouse, about an event that she saw online and is relevant to us. There was a meeting of the group that is concerned with substance abuse and mental issues. And Brooke listened to that and gave me a report. The key takeaway was that there's a difference between the concerns of adults and the concerns of school kids. And there were several North Mason kids that were part of this. And the event is supposed to be posted online at KMass, maybe tomorrow, I don't know. It's a couple of days ago since this thing happened. But I was glad to, you know, hear that report, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Well, I also attended the awards night for scholarships, and I think you were there too, Art.
Yes, I was.
And it was pretty spectacular. Our kids took home over a quarter of a million dollars in scholarships. We, as a foundation, were able to give out eighty-six thousand dollars. But that is, if you want to have a good cry, that's a really good night to go to next time. And I went, of course, to the graduation, and I was so impressed with the way the high school, and I hope that you tell them this too, set that up and made that happen. And to just be there and see what it's going to be next year, I hope we have it in the stadium again.
Yeah.
And I hope all the chairs are spread out, even if they don't have to be, because that gave significance to every single student. And they came in and walked the whole track around and came back through the big old inflated bulldog and down. And I'd just like to mention that our educators typically wear their robes from their school of graduation, and they couldn't this year because Jostens, where the robes come from, couldn't turn them around quick enough in terms of the COVID protocol. So they couldn't have their robes there. Some, maybe a couple of them had their robes on, maybe they keep them. But anyway, I'm sure that will, that will be there next year. But it was fabulous, the music fabulous. And you guys talk about crying on your end? I just had him in between. And I think he was too. Anyway, it was really a great night, and I, I just really applaud the high school staff for pulling that off.
I would just like to thank God for stopping the rain just for the graduation, and then it just poured, so, amen.
All right, we are now at the consent agenda.
I'd like to move we approve the consent agenda as given.
Okay, are there, is there any discussion? Art?
Curious enough, I only have one, and it's really going to be short. And it is under the agreements and contracts. And I'll just relate briefly that I got very fooled by the third one down called Fuel Education. When I was looking at that, I was really looking for something that had to do with buses. And if maybe you could just explain to me that it's not buses.
No, Fuel Ed provides curriculum for our online learning experience for our elementary school children. And so as we're continuing HomeLink offerings in the fall, they've contracted to continue that online curriculum for those students.
As I figured out, it's really just the name of a company.
Yes.
But boy, Fuel Education, okay. That's all I had.
I'm just, was curious, the voucher that goes to North Mason High School for all of the, looks like fines that students have, I guess I don't understand that process, why we would write a check to the high school.
We do that for transparency purposes when it comes to accounting, to ensure that we're not crossing our funds by doing transfers in-house, but it's actually being vetted through the entire check process so that it's easy to track the approval process and all of that versus an accountant just doing an entry in the books to move money around.
So these students all paid those fines, those are paid fines?
Correct, but it's, but it's not necessarily the students paying it. It could be InvestEd technically paying the funds. Or it could be other grant funding that has been received by the district that helps offset costs for HomeLink students.
I see. And then that money comes into us, and then we are cutting a check to the high school.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, it's been moved to approve the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion pass. And now, we are at item three, the twenty-one, twenty-two superintendent contract. And I asked Jackie to include the annual summative evaluation as well as the monitoring reports just to be completely transparent about how we determine the superintendent's renewal or non-renewal. And in this case, we did renew her contract for three years, and she chose to not negotiate an increase in her salary based on our, our current financial situation. So I am going to entertain a motion to approve or not the superintendent's contract.
I motion that we approve the superintendent's contract as presented.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, we are at number four, Wasdah Legislative Representative. And currently, it's Leanna, and her term is for another year till 2022. Does the director want to stay on or switch directors?
I started off with it pretty strong, and it started with COVID. So I got into it with Zoom, and I was Zoom, Zoom, Zooming, and we were, and then it's been the past few months, things have, so I can take it for another year and be better. I know that they slow down, they don't actually slow down, they just work, work, work. But, and, and John was not interested, is anybody interested currently?
I'm interested, but I'm restraining myself.
I honestly, I believe that your first year was really clouded because of COVID. So you were not really in a position to be able to go meet with those other legislative representatives, which is really an education in itself. Zoom is fine, but, you know, face-to-face interactive meetings are really, really positive.
I thought it was a really good way to meet everybody, though, because you got to see them without any of the, nobody was nervous. Everybody was sitting in their, in their front room with, I swear, nobody was wearing pants. You know what I mean? Like, everybody's wearing a shirt, and they're all comfortable, drinking their coffee, and it was really good. So it was, it was good work. But yeah, if, I will definitely take it again.
Good.
Okay.
That's all I need to hear. So this is really not an action item. Okay. And we'll move on to board development and linkage with the superintendent update.
There's some discussion, there's going to be discussion on the conference.
Oh, that's right, thank you, thank you. Right, we, I got the email that said we really need to decide whether or not we're going to go because we have to make reservations and registrations. And my initial reaction again this year is because we don't have a levy in place and because we don't have an idea of what will happen this fall, I personally can take myself out of it, I've been there a million times. But I think it's really important for the new board member to go and the legislative rep to go.
Yeah, I had questions about how, well, this is like knock on wood if I'm elected by then, but do you guys typically go overnight, and then is it typically you go every single day?
Is it Bellevue or?
It's Bellevue.
Thank God.
Yeah.
They make us fly to Spokane.
It would be a question of, I mean, you could bring Oz.
Yeah.
You might need to, if that's the situation then.
I feel, if I can mention, I feel that if, in the evening, because you get to choose, really choose to go to the sessions, if there's like something that, I think they're over around five or six, and then there's like, you know, dinner and stuff like that. So if you needed to go home from there because of, of baby time, you know, and, and family time.
I think, honestly, I feel like your family could come with you.
Oh, really? My husband and my son did one year.
So I, I just think, well, I already told you what I think.
I'm open, I'm definitely interested. I was looking at the, there was like a pre-conference too that I was particularly interested in because it was the boot camp. And so I just didn't know if it was something where you typically go every, every day.
We do, we, we go every day. There are sessions all day long, and they're good sessions. And the one positive, really positive thing about the conference is that that's when all five of us can get together and have discussions and conversation without taking action or taking, you know, anything like that.
Of course, no work is done, but we just get to each other.
So that would be the one detriment for not all of us going.
And the new board member.
Boot camp.
Boot camp, it really, it's worth it. And you sit around with people that are all kind of still questioning themselves, and then that you get to like hear somebody, and then you get to ask questions. And, I mean, you don't get the full, you know, the full feel-good till the end. And then you're kind of like, wow, you know, I'm part of this, yeah, so that's, it's pretty cool. I liked it.
Have we ever sent their student board members? I'm looking at the student rates, wow.
Spencer went a couple of years, and they were going to go last year.
Was it in Spokane, does it rotate every year, Spokane, Bellevue?
Yes, it goes Spokane and then back to Bellevue.
Well, this would be the year for me to do it, just because of the timing of it. At my job, it's usually a very bad time, but I know we're not going to have a fundraiser this year for the Hospital Foundation, so I'm interested. And I think even if I don't get elected, you know, then what happens? The, that person coming on would still be a new board member.
If they choose to go.
Yeah, they might not choose to go. Art, your, your feelings?
Yeah, it's very well worth going to, even, even after I had gone to so many of them that I thought, well, they can't possibly come up with new things. They do come up with new things, but even going through some of the other things, again, is worth it. Plus nowadays, this wasn't true some, some years ago, nowadays, they're also making all board, all school board members in the entire state have to take the course on, help you with this.
Equity. Equity.
Well, equity, the other one, the legal requirements.
Open Public Meetings Act.
Yeah, right.
Open Public Meetings Act.
And that's a certification thing that we have to have.
Oh, yeah, you gotta do it right there.
And you can do it right there, and that's, that's the best place to do it with.
Yeah, no, it sounds very valuable.
And that's, that's also worth it, that's worth, that one's worth going to over and over again.
I think I'm due.
Yeah, I think we probably all are, but we can do it online too.
Yeah.
John, your feelings?
I can't do it this year.
Okay.
But I approve of it.
I do too, and it's a.
It is November.
So I have that open nineteenth through twentieth.
Yeah.
So pre-conference is the Thursday, November eighteenth is the, and so the three pre-conferences, so you can only pick one, then I take it.
If it's all day.
Okay, so there's the board boot camp, the power of student voice, and a law conference.
The law conference is all day.
Yes, it is all day.
It looks like they're all from eleven to four-thirty.
Okay.
The benefit of multiple of us going. Sorry, it's nineteen through twenty, and then the eighteenth is the pre-conference.
Yeah, and that's usually my slow time for my shop, so, do be.
Well, I would really like to go, because of the emphasis on equity, I think this is a.
You can go to the pre-conference.
Yeah.
You could go to that.
We are also going to be doing, providing professional development on equity that the board would be invited to attend this year, so.
Okay.
Is that in August, the three PD days?
An important issue, potentially hot button, is something about which we should be prepared to answer questions. And I include myself.
It's a wonderful opportunity to network with other school boards from other school districts. And you learn a lot from them, and, you know, you can exchange thoughts and ideas and information. It's really, I, that's my main reason ever for going. I mean, the workshops are good, and the must-do workshops, workshops are great, but I really, I pick up a lot from those other school districts. So, okay, so you would go, and you would go.
Okay.
Okay? Does that sound right? And the rest of us are not going in light of the current financial situation in the school district.
And just so we're transparent for the meeting, and if anybody's listening, we're talking about, so it's the regular rate, right? It's one eighty-five for a pre-conference and five fifteen for the whole conference. If we, if you pay before September twenty-fifth.
Yes.
They have some really nice pens at various exhibits.
Oh, girl, we're gonna get some pens.
Keep a sharp eye out for those things.
That's my favorite part.
Okay, out of control. Okay, so now we're, we're back to the superintendent update.
All right, and we will start with the budget status report. And we have a bittersweet moment tonight. This will be Ashley's last meeting to attend, and our first meeting would be at our new finance director.
Welcome.
Hi.
Thank you.
So we're going to, to do it a little bit differently tonight. This is our only meeting that we're going to have an overlap. And so Vedon's been working quite diligently on getting to know Forecast Five and how to use the reporting software that we've all been, become accustomed to. And so she's going to be going through our month-end reports with you for the month of May. And then I'll be assisting or interjecting when I need to put in some additional information. And so I'll let Vedon start. Normally, we start with the other funds, and so that's what Jackie has up currently. So you'll start with that one.
Okay. I would do my best to present this one. Okay, hang on.
No pressure.
Yeah.
Let me play catch-up here.
There you go.
Okay, so these are our, our separate funds. So capital project fund for May, we are, oh, I'm sorry, I should explain. This is our fund balance, right, for the month of, for each month of the year. So May, our fund balance went slightly down for capital projects, most likely because we were working on some projects. Our debt service fund is up at two point two million versus one point eight. Our ASB is four hundred and four thousand. And then our transportation fund is, there was no spending there, so we should be at one eighty.
And we did make air our debt service payment on June first, so that a nice two point two million dollar number dropped significantly with our payment. But our fund is still sitting with enough to ensure that we have balance to make our next debt payment here in six months. There was actually a very interesting situation that had arisen, and Mason County had an issue with their bank. Mason County is technically who makes our bond payments for us, and the bond payments technically didn't get made by them on time. But all school districts are part of the school bond guarantee program. If you go through voted debt, and there's a reason, so if there's a bank snafu, state pops in and covers your bond payment, which is what happened. It wasn't just us, it was all Mason County districts except for Merriam-Knight because Merriam-Knight doesn't have voted debt. So we're covered, and then technically, we repaid the state for what they did making the payment for us. So that's all been solidified and fixed. And then on the capital project side, we had a payment go out to a vendor for the ramp at the softball field, and we're currently still sitting on those funds. We have a meeting with Dana next week to discuss next steps for capital projects for the district in the coming year with the half million dollars remaining in that fund.
And the transportation vehicle fund, is there a plan to spend some money there?
There's not necessarily a plan to spend money, there's a plan to save money. So we are getting our depreciation payment in August. It's better if you purchase buses in, in groups of at least three. Now, the cost of a large bus is right there at around a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, so obviously, we don't have enough to do that yet. So we're going to be banking our depreciation dollars over the course of the next two years and then placing an order, a larger order for bus replacement. But if you'll remember, back at the beginning of this year, we had placed the order for the smaller buses, and we got those. And so right now, we're sitting with a very healthy fleet of buses as far as the age, and so we're sort of long-term planning now for bus replacement.
Okay, thank you.
What was the issue with the county, just some type of glitch?
Yeah, it was apparently a glitch, so everything's done via remote transfers. And from what we've been told, the bank that Mason County Treasurer works with, they had sent the electronic file, but there was some type. But there was some type of miscommunication as to whether or not it was actually received. And these type of electronic cash files have to be received by a specific timeframe, like we're talking by the minute. Like when we do our ACH payments for payroll, they have to be received by three twenty-seven. If you go three twenty-eight, you've missed your deadline. And so it was one of those situations. It was a few minutes late. And it did not get paid out in time.
Interesting. Thank you.
Thanks, Ashley. That was very helpful. Um, okay, so this one is our enrollment, projected versus actual, actual being blue. This entire chart makes sense because we have a decrease in enrollment this year, particularly in May, which is based off of May thirty-first. We are on the same trend, same pattern. So there's nothing unusual about this.
One of the positive things to report with this that I was pleasantly happy to see is if you remember from past years, your trend from basically January to the end of the year, your enrollment starts to decline. Not a lot, a few each month due to early high school graduations. And our trend did not decrease. We went up a few each month. It showed that as we brought that back, different tiers and grades bands of students. We got more students back that had originally disenrolled from the district. So that's actually positive information and trends to see when we start looking at a full return next year and what we can anticipate as far as our enrollment.
Are you basing your projections for next year on the actual enrollment this year?
No, we, we, Dana and I had met and we actually discussed our enrollment trends going into next year quite extensively. We decided to go with a more conservative approach when it comes to our enrollment trend, just because of the situation we dealt with this year. So we are building a budget around an enrollment of two thousand two hundred and ten FTE for next school year. Now, what I will say is last year, prior to the pandemic, we were at two thousand three hundred and thirty-four student FTE. So two thousand two hundred and ten is still obviously a fairly significant decrease from the prior year. But taking a more conservative approach because we simply don't know what's going to happen as far as the actual requirements. Are there still going to be mask requirements? Are parents going to be comfortable sending their kids back? Are they not going to be comfortable? What age are the, the, is the vaccines going to drop to? Is it going to stay at twelve? Are they going to be able to vaccinate younger kids? We decided that a more conservative approach was better versus getting into a situation where we had budgeted for a higher enrollment, anticipating more kids returning, getting those dollars in from the state, and then being back in the recovery situation that we dealt with this year with the state. So we will be budgeting at only two thousand two hundred and ten. And then crossing our fingers and hoping that when our doors open come September, that we can welcome all two thousand three hundred thirty-four plus of our students back.
That'd be wonderful.
Yeah.
What, that's still slightly more than how, you know, the actuals that we have right now. What's some of the discussion that you guys had and, you know, what makes you believe that we'll have even that slight bump?
A part of it is our slight increase in trend as we started bringing kids back. And we saw that, we saw that upward movement because we did have early graduates this year. So when you're seeing the increase of just two or three per month, it was two or three in addition to what we lost at the high school level. So our trends did actually increase in all reality by ten to twelve each month. Because we did lose students for other reasons as well. So that's a positive trend that we were actually looking at. And then when we start looking at the number of younger elementary students, kindergarten, first grade, that once school was open again. The increase at those levels, the hope is that next year, we're able to, the parents that had, let's say, held back their kindergarten-age kid and said, we'll just wait another year before we send them, that we'll see those kids come back into that first grade level. And then we welcome in the, the new kindergarten class and we'll see that increase. The increase to two thousand two hundred and ten is still fairly conservative, considering what our trend looked like this year.
It's really only twenty FTE. I think that was, that was a good, yeah, good move.
Yep. We didn't want to put ourselves in a position where we would over-budget revenue. And anticipate and staff based upon an increased FTE that we didn't potentially see.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Are you sure you don't want to attend next month's working with me?
I will have multiple board meetings that I will be attending.
We can put her on speakerphone in that way.
I'll get better over time.
You're doing great.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll start with the revenues. The top left, you'll see a red radio button. That is telling us that we are projected to be at sixty-eight percent, bringing in revenue at sixty-eight percent of revenues. But we are, we are also at sixty-eight percent. And this is great because we lost some revenues with the student enrollment decline. But then we also, we're able to offset that with a couple of other things. So like grants, ESSR, all of that. So this is, this is great for us. The purple radio button talks about our local sources. We were projected to have fifty-six percent of revenues in. We're at eighty-one percent. And Ashley, I think this has something to do with the half-year levy, right?
Correct. Exactly, exactly. Because it trends back four years. And for the prior four years, we've always had an October and an April collection. And unfortunately, this year, we only had our October collection. So budget-wise, which is what that top circle is going off of, budget-wise, it's saying, hey, you've collected way more than what you would normally collect during this period. When it's comparing it to the budgeted amount of the two point three million, but it's because we only had the part-year collection.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay. The blue radio button is our state sources. We projected year-to-date, we'd be at sixty-nine percent. We are at sixty-four percent. This is, this makes sense. We are, it's consistent with our enrollment decrease. So of course, with a decrease in enrollment, we'll be bringing in less money, particularly from the state. The green radio button is our federal sources. We projected year-to-date, we would be at sixty-eight percent. We are at ninety-seven percent. This definitely makes sense because we brought in a ton of ESSR dollars, which is from our federal source. So that's great for us.
You're going to see that circle next month be way over a hundred percent because all of the work we've been doing in the business office recently has been to put us in a position to make a significant claim against our ESSR two dollars to help us get through that October lack of a levy collection. And we were successful in making a one point five million dollar claim on expenditures the district has already paid. So that one point five million dollars that's coming will sit in the fund balance then and offset those fall expenditures to make sure everything's good when it comes to paying vendors and payroll, opening up for the beginning of the school year, and that transition process.
Okay, so now we are looking at expenditures. The first green radio button, this is showing where, year-to-date, I'm sorry, not year-to-date. We are projected, hang on, it's coming to me. It was so graceful in my head. Oh, that's right, that's right. Okay, this is our year-end fund balance. And currently, we are projected to be at ten percent. And this is great because we want to be at ten percent or eight, between eight and ten percent. So as long as we continue to. As long as we continue to.
Bring in more revenues, decrease expenditures, we'll stay at that ten percent threshold. That ten percent is what I've been pushing all year long and hitting home, that we have to be by ten percent by September. And we're at ten percent. So that's.
That's right where we want you to be. Thank you very much.
Yep. So now we just need to stay there over the course of the summer and we'll be good to go.
Is that actually telling us that we're, we're right now at ten percent?
Yes, and you're, you're going to see it in the next, well, it's. So technically, what that's telling you is that where we're going to be in August is at ten percent right now. Based upon my most recent ESSR claim, we're technically a bit over ten percent right now.
Right, we'll see the number when the other chart.
Yep, but you're going to see on that, that month-end chart where we, where we are.
Very impressive.
It really is. Okay. For our red radio button, we were projected to have, to have spent seventy-five percent. We are at seventy percent. This also makes sense because with less enrollment, there wouldn't be a need to expend as much. So that is, that makes sense. For our salary and benefits, purple radio button, we projected seventy-four percent. We're right at seventy-three percent. For, for the, for the blue radio button, we projected seventy-four percent. We're at seventy-one percent. And likewise, this is our basic education expenditure. So again, that makes sense because with decreasing enrollment, there was a decrease in basics, so anything from the state.
And that was one of the areas that we really focused on this year is we decreased our revenue collection due to the decreased enrollment, making sure that we did an offset with decreased expenditures and managing all of our purchasing to offset those decreases.
So those two are also, in a, in another way of looking at it, it's a function of belt tightening.
Exactly. That's exactly what it is. This is my favorite chart. I love it.
Me too, actually. When I started studying for it, I was like, oh, I real, I see why you like it now.
Yeah.
Okay, so this one, this is a great one. So we, our, our current year, we are at the top one, so the, the solid blue line. What's, what's, what we always want to look for is, we want to make sure that we're being somewhat consistent with previous years. So currently for May, we are at two point nine million in our fund balance. And this is where we, or this chart, this graph shows where our fund balance is at each month. So what we want to pay attention to is at the far right side where it's three point two million. We want to make sure that as long as we are trending the way we are right now, we are going to be right at that amount, which is, which is going to give us our ten percent fund balance at the end of the year in order to move forward.
Remember that green triangle? You're not seeing it right now because our blue line is over it.
Yay!
And that's exactly what we were trying for. So getting those additional federal dollars in, looking for the additional grants and anything we could claim against, we've been able to mitigate that gap we've been trying to cover for the last few months.
I'm so sorry. Okay, so this is our, just a basic overview of our general fund. What I want to point out is our total revenue, we are. Okay, I need help with this one.
That's fine. So the, so what we're focusing on with this chart is basically where we have lost revenue over the course of the year, based upon that variance column in the far right side. And where we have cut costs to offset that lost revenue in the expense side. So we, we started with a three point eight million dollar revenue deficit due to the decreased enrollment. We've been chipping away at that, that revenue deficit. Now, the one point five million dollar claim that I just did yesterday is not included up there on the revenue side. So ESSR is not trending in any of these, any of these areas because ESSR was not available during the budget process last summer. So when we add in that one point five million dollar claim that I just did, that's going to offset that two point two million dollar revenue deficit. Then you start looking at the expenditure side and you see sort of where we're trending over for our variances on that side. When you net those together, it comes down to the fact that we're seeing a million dollar, just over a million dollar deficit this year. Based upon the belt tightening, like Art said, that we've done. And now that one point five million dollar claim is coming in to fill the gap. That was the important piece, is getting those dollars in to be able to mitigate that loss. Because as a district with no local levy, we have no room in the budget to be in a deficit because we're not going to be collecting anything else. So we had to make sure that we could fill it with something else to get through the lack of an October collection. And we've been able to do that now.
Great.
And so that's the last slide for that one. So, questions, comments, concerns?
Well, once again, good job, good job. And I'm hoping that there is a way to translate this information into an understandable base that we can post it on the website. Because I, I think it's really important that the ESSR dollars came in. Yes, we did get them. But they only filled the gap that the levy left.
Exactly.
So I think that would be really important to emphasize that, so people understand that we're, we're not, we're not rich. We're not getting richer because of ESSR dollars at all. And there are many ties to those dollars.
Well, and just like you said, Laura, like, yes, the ESSR came in and filled that gap from the loss of the local levy. But we still have the loss from the enrollment decline.
Right.
And that's where the district and the leadership team and the administrators came together. And we mitigated those losses and found other ways to cut costs because we knew ESSR could only cover so much with those limitations. It was definitely interesting even trying to come up with allowable costs that we could transfer over to the ESSR side because you can't double-dip in different funding sources. But as a team, we were able to do it in a way to be able to preserve the financial integrity of the district going into next year. To give our students the best education possible in the current climate.
Right, right. Well, and the enrollment decline actually translates to about a million and a half, a million eight?
The, technically, the enrollment decline led to three point eight million dollar revenue loss between general apportionment and categorical funding losses.
Okay.
So we, what we were able to do was cut other costs on our expense side to help mitigate some of that loss. And then we just came up with that million dollar shortfall that needed to be filled with other revenues.
Wow.
If I could make just one comment, this is technically out of order, but I think this is such an important theme. It's worth considering for whoever's writing the next board letter, something really concise. Because misunderstandings between ourselves and the public can happen easily. And I think we need to be candid and very clear about what our finances truly are. Because the impression is so easy to make that, oh, they're wallowing in money. No, we are not. And here is a reason why.
Yep.
We're running a tight ship and here is how things are going. That message is really important for us to communicate to the public, and I think particularly at this time.
Exactly. I agree.
Thank you, both of you.
Yep.
The team, the team. Okay, Superintendent Rosenbaum?
Yes, I, I will have just a little bit additional, but our next presentation is from Tom Warland, our special programs director. And he's going to talk about some preschool things that are happening. You can just.
All right. Actually, I was glad, I don't have any radio dials. I just wanted to have a conversation really. And I'm going to, I'm going to talk a bit about, I was going to go ahead and go through the history. And I thought, no, I'm going to start with next year. So let's, let's move forward with preschool. I don't know how much you know about preschool, so I want you to just chime in at any time if you have a question about what I'm going to talk about. So preschool is a very different animal than K-12. Has, has a lot of different moving parts to it. So our part is a special education program called Developmental Preschool. And it has its own little qualifying categories. And we've operated that program for years and years and years. Five years ago, Dana asked if we could move it from the elementary schools where it was housed and start. and start the Thelmer Early Learning Center. So that's been the process over the last five years. Next year, we will have uh probably forty-three, four kids that we qualify through the course of the year in our developmental preschool. That's where where the numbers have been. Uh actually, they've grown since we moved to the uh to the preschool. So we'll have that program. Uh we also blend with E cap. E cap is a state-funded of uh state-funded preschool program. And uh there it's primarily for folks with um um lower income, but they can also take on um families that have higher income if they have a student disability. So we team with them, and they will have a classroom um next year. And then we started last year, the um it's called the state calls it transitional kindergarten. We call ours early entrance kindergarten. And that is a kindergarten program for four-year-olds that will be five years old at the next September. Um and so we recruit those students and start them. Uh we've been starting them in January uh the last two years. Then they are in um full full-time as best we could this year, but last year was five days a week, full day of a preschool kindergarten program preparing those kids. They have to have some deficit, but it's not to the extent that a developmental preschool. So we've got those programs going. Um facilities, you know, obviously the remodel at Thelmer was significant. Um and now we have two portables, and now our our uh early entrance kindergarten program is in the portable. Next year also, we kinda had this fall in our laps. We were able to partner with a private outdoor preschool that is gonna come in and be in the wetlands. Um and they're just gonna use a small portion of the exhibit hall, mostly for the restroom and a little bit of a um coops and things, the storage. And but mostly the outside. It's called Barnacles and Bees. They they're functioning in uh Kitsap County now. Um actually, my granddaughter goes there, and she loves it. So we're really excited. They're gonna do two days a week um starting this year, Tuesdays and Thursdays. Uh I'm not exactly sure. I think they're trying one session, kind of a half-day session, um two days a week. So they'll they'll be going that way. So overall, again, we had forty-three developmental preschool students who qualified this year. Those numbers are really consistent with what we've had in the past. And we had twelve early entrants. Uh we decided that we kinda stopped recruiting. We didn't have a lot of other kids coming in anyway, so we developed a little bit of a waiting list this year um because we wanted them four days a week. So we didn't have to go hybrid with that. So we could do the four days a week for all of the kids rather than to split them into uh two-day-a-week. And what we ended up happening is um a couple of kids moved, and so we had two kids on a waiting list, and we just brought them in. So we ended up serving probably about fourteen students, but twelve was our cap number that we were working within that classroom. Um and then E cap and head start this year were virtual, so they weren't on-site at all this year. I have a a really solid team of of teachers and pairs. Um we've really now worked together for several years. And every year, the last two years, we've done an inclusion grant that we've gotten through our E S D. It's a lot of P D uh for professional development. Um it also involves some virtual tours of other preschools and stuff with the intent, and the whole vision of this is to create an inclusionary experience for our kids with developmental disability um or our developmental preschool students. It's very difficult in preschool to do that. There it without probably a tuition-based um type program. So um E cap has a niche, and we can give some kids in E cap, the state one, but really that doesn't that program doesn't really fit all children's needs. It really is a set a set program for a specific kind of need. So um let's see. Well, that's kind of that's where we're going and where we were this year. Up to this year, it's been basically working through E cap, trying to work through the different rules and regulations of E cap and trying to make our developmental preschool kids kind of fit into that mold. And what we really learned is that kinda what I said, we we really can use E cap for for a small numbers scale children, about fourteen children can with with disabilities or with an I P could go into E cap and be successful within their within their group. So we have we had forty-three, right? So we have other kids that need inclusionary practices. They get their special education time. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna have a mixing time, which will have E cap kids come in to the larger room at Thelmer and mix, and it'll be during choice time. And so they'll get that some interaction time. And then I hope, if we can pass our levy and we can continue to invest in this program, I hope that we could add maybe a tuition-based preschool. The we're we're we spent some time this year um with a consultant through the grant that we got, looking at some of them around the state. And there was one that it was in a small community, and we said, well, how did you do this? And they said, we just opened our doors and let kids come in. We're like, well, maybe we should maybe we could do that. I don't know. We'll have to look at that. But um and then others have tuition that they do a sliding-scale tuition to bring in other kids. You know, some of the obviously concerns is that we have to look at competing with privates, and we don't wanna we're we're not in a position to wanna compete. Uh we wanna partner. Um and so that's, you know, that's where we are. So that's really what I wanted to tell you. So now, if you have any questions or?
Um I you know, as a mom of a my son's starting preschool in the fall, and we're driving him to Gig Harbor um two days a week. And I just hear it all the time from the moms in, you know, with the young kids. It's they're taking their kids to Port Orchard, they're taking their kids to Gig Harbor, and they're taking their kids to Shelton.
Yeah.
So there's a huge dearth of, you know, uh you know, places that kids can go here. So I think it's exciting.
I I agree.
You know, the more we can do, it's and it's.
There were a couple of preschools that since COVID kinda shut them down. We have some daycares now that kind of do they do some kind of light preschool. Actually, our our transitional kindergarten class, one of the parameters is that they can't have had any experience in a preschool program. So we've kinda walked away from the daycare saying, don't call yourself preschool. Uh you know, you're not it's not really robust. And so so that because otherwise, we can't qualify them for our traditional kindergarten or our transitional kindergarten program. That's that's one of the state's big parameters is that they have and they can't have had any previous experience. So so anyway, that's why we timed that program a bit to start it a little later so that all of them fill, so we're not competing. Next year, we're gonna be timed that a little tighter. We should be able to start our our transitional kindergarten in November rather than January. That'll give the kids another two two months more of experience. And we're also, now that we've had two cohorts, we're gonna track them as we look at our kindergarten numbers and see how we're doing in kindergarten. Cause I I just know that they're well, they're already doing well in A love school. And so I just know that they're gonna be in kindergarten and fine.
So Tom, you said we have it's like forty-three, forty-four. That's everybody. That's the developmental, the E cap together.
Yeah, developmental preschool is involves child find. And so through the course of the school year, that's why they go four days a week. So one day, our staff is working on anybody that comes out of the birth to birth to three. If you've ever heard of that before, there's a birth to three program that we don't actually do, but they once they turn three years old, they come into the developmental preschool, and we have to qualify them at that point. So they're doing those kids that come out of that program or any child that moves or comes into the area that may have a disability, we child find those, and we'll evaluate. So that's how the numbers will start. You usually start with about twenty some, and then by the end of this school year, we're at forty-five, forty-four, forty-five.
Um are there what's the sort of you mentioned the tuition-based preschool. What's the long-term, you know, when could when might that, you know, in the best possible scenario, when would that be able to be open?
Well, um my best possible scenario, Dana.
Probably wouldn't be until the the earliest would be the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
If we pass if we can pass this levy, you know, it really is this these programs, um you know, the funding on them isn't there there is no Gen Ed preschool, right? There's no O S P I does not have Gen Ed preschool. So the only preschool they fund is our developmental preschool.
Now, yeah.
It's a completely different thing, so.
And there is potentially things happening in Washington DC to fully fund preschool for all children. Um and if that happens, that will be a revenue source to be in program.
And then we can start to look at that. If it's tuition-based, we'd need to have somebody at the center who could really we need a we need a at least a clerical person there to
Sure.
kinda manage it first and help. Um and that's so that's the expense the district would have to take on, and that's gonna have to be levy-funded. Um and then from that, we could start to put the wheels in place to figure out if we wanna charge and how much we wanna charge.
But that's like great information to even know as we talk about the levy to the voters, you know. I mean, that's something that I I hadn't really heard or even thought about, like, oh, we could potentially be able to fund a preschool program here.
Which then we would really have a truly integrated program for kids. Cause we would still do child find the way we do it, and we would still bring those kids in, but we would have a cluster of kids that that will um that we could um pair with for that modeling and and really prepare. So it would be it would be ideal. And um the other thing I'll have to say is we teamed with E cap the last two years, but we were feeding we were filling pretty much E cap's program with our students with disabilities. So even though it was called a blended E cap program, it had like seventy percent kids with diabetes in it. So what we're doing this year, it's truly blended, is I'm saying we're gonna provide fifteen for your of your thirty. So we'll be at fifty percent, and that's what the state considers as an inclusionary preschool. So we'll bring that program into alignment with what the state considers as true inclusion. And now we have to fill that gap with with that other piece, which I'm thinking, unless the feds come through with some other kind of preschool program, probably a tuition-based.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very interested in preschool.
I know.
I bet you are.
Early education is really where it's at.
Well, and we know our kids in North Mason are are not all getting to start from, you know, a place with with lots of resources for themselves and their families. And we see that when we evaluate our children's readiness for kindergarten. Our kids are entering kindergarten. Only about thirty percent are ready for what they need to do in kindergarten. And the more we can expand and provide quality preschool programs, the better opportunities our children have to be successful throughout their school career. So we're we're gonna continue to focus on that and look for ways to make it happen.
Well, thank you for all your work that you do. And I understand you're thinking about retiring.
I am.
Well, that's just not gonna happen.
Back to my wife a lot.
Yeah, we we'll we'll not talk about that right now.
No, we won't.
But um yes, the other thing I wanted to share with you that we're very, very excited about, as you know, we're committed to um engaging our community and in root truly being so that our schools truly are the center for the whole child, the whole school, within the whole community. And it's hard to do. It's been particularly hard to do this year. Uh but we have a new tool that we're really excited about that will help us engage with our community. And we sent out our first message inviting people to participate this afternoon. This tool is called Thought Exchange. Um it it lives in the cloud. It's you know, all technology is so wonderful these days. There's so many things we can do. But with Thought Exchange, we can do a number of things. We can use it during a live program meeting when a bunch of people are in the room. But it allows us to use technology. We can ask a question. People can engage with their answers on their cell phones or whatever right there in the room. And we can imme- immediately chart the responses, and they have an opportunity to respond to each other. And so it makes that time that much more efficient than, you know, in a traditional um kind of meeting where we a forum where we have to have people come up to the mi- mic one at a time, and there's not really a engagement going back and forth about ideas. This allows us to engage everybody and everybody's ideas. We also can do it by sending out a link and asking people to answer an open-ended question um in a not-real-time format. And that's what we did today. We sent out a question, and we sent it out via Blackboard, and we posted it on our Facebook page. People have been sharing it already. We sent out the invitation around three-ish this afternoon, Jackie, and by four, we had seventy-eight responses. And those responses included people's first response to the question as well as you can respond to other people's comments. And there's n- no identification of who's writing anything or responding here, and you can rate other people's comments. So when we gather and look at all the data that we've got, we can see what ideas are most important to most people in the community. What ideas do some people have but are not really that important to the rest of the community? So it really allows us to get deep input from everybody and to weed weed through the weeds. You know, sometimes when we're engaging and we're hearing about social media and people are engaging on social media, whoever puts stuff on and is the loudest makes it seem like that's what everybody thinks. This tool actually helps us weed through that and see what does everybody think and not just the people with the loudest voices. So I'm really excited about it. And um our first question that we asked today has at was as you think of our North Mason students' return to school in the fall, what thoughts and concerns do you have? And we're getting some great feedback already. When we close this exchange next Thursday, we will be able to immediately post everything everybody said for everybody to see. And um we'll also use all that information as we do our planning, and it'll be really exciting to share and talk with you about it our next board meeting.
Awesome.
Very cool.
So we can get a hold of that uh soon? I mean, I would love to see this. This sounds really very important.
Yeah, well, we sent you the question. We sent everybody that we send a a Blackboard to the questions today, and we posted it on our Facebook. And then I I'm the owner of that question. So I can't tell who answered it. But the computer also prevents somebody from like the same person at the same I P address putting in a hundred of the same responses. The the system all takes care of all of that and keeps it honest and pure. And so but I can look in real time and see what responses we have so far, um what are the trends. Um it's it's really pretty exciting, and it organizes all the information. So next Thursday, when I'm done, then I don't need to pull a bunch of people in or spend hours or days figuring out how to put it in charts and everything. It's already done. I can just click a button and share it with our community.
So you mentioned Blackboard. Is that something that all of our email addresses are on?
If you have signed up, we send out that's where we send out. They should be, right, Jackie? That's where we send out, you know, schools closing or, you know, whatever events we're sending out to people or reminders. You know, it's a snow day, those kinds of things.
It's just the so I got the email, and I'm in it right now, and it's really cool.
And you're in, and you're.
I I shared my thoughts, and I'm looking at these other people's thoughts right now.
So we just have to make sure that our emails are linked to that.
It is on like if we have um if we shared it on Facebook.
If you share it on Facebook, other people can take that link and go in and do it. Now, it will not allow somebody from the same I P address to keep, you know, trying to flood it with their ideas.
And is it is it worth mentioning if your email is connected to this uh to Blackboard or to the?
If you signed up with the school district?
If you're signed up with you can go on here and push your that's really cool.
But no, anybody can can do it. They don't have to be.
You can share it. You can share the link with anybody.
Okay.
And they can go do it. They can go to our Facebook page. That's where Jackie posted it as well. It's there.
Yeah.
You just click on the link and answer the question.
Cool.
So we go we go to the school Facebook page to get hooked up with it?
So she sent us an email. It's called Thought Nicole sent it.
Well, I really think that that's worth um like if we share it one time, share it over and over, cause it takes um when the community sees it one time, it takes them a while to catch on. So like sharing it, sharing it, sharing it.
Once we actually have results and people see it, then next time, we're gonna get that much more.
Right, it'll.
Because it's it's really deep. The the level of information that we get is really incredibly deep. Uh we're we're not sharing on the computer tonight, but I can pull up the reports I have so far so far at the end of the meeting if you want me to show you what it kinda looks like right now. So.
That's really cool.
It's really cool.
All right, we're at um Capital Projects.
Yeah, so we are finally finished with Philpew Stadium.
Yay!
We are, for real.
Nice.
The statement got into the consent agenda, correct? And you guys looked at that, the the letter of completion?
Yes.
So we're good?
We're good.
We're good. We're done. We're good. We're done.
Right.
That's so awesome.
This is an action item.
Oh, yeah, see, that's the one I was talking about, that.
Yep, right there.
Yep.
So they need to approve.
Yes.
The completion.
Yep, exactly.
We need to have a motion.
And Chairman, I move that we, uh, accept the Capital Project, um, as complete.
All right. Is there any discussion? Questions, concerns?
I'm just happy.
Me too.
That it's done.
It really looks nice.
It's beautiful.
Feels nice being there.
Now, we do, I'm really excited. One little addition that we will have is coming from a community member. We do have a community member who is making some really cool signage that, in metal, that's going to go on the stadium, you know, home of the Bulldogs.
Oh, awesome.
Those will be up in time for fall, I'm sure.
That's great.
Very cool.
All right.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We are now at upcoming board letter columnist. June is Leanna. I have July. Arla has August, and Art has September, which means you probably have October.
Fine.
Okay.
I just had, I just wanna make a comment on that. I just had an idea, and a very idea I have, of course, deserves the public. You know, I've got a connection with the Victor Improvement Club, and we haven't been meeting, you know, for a whole year. And I should, you know, depending on, you know, I mentioned the, you know, the finance bit, whatever will be the next quarter, struck me that one of the things I could do is write a little preface, send it to the president of our organization who's still in touch with everybody, and ask that it be distributed, you know, put a little message myself on it, but ask that it be distributed among our members, and that would at least be a way for me to connect, connect with some kind of community that I'm ordinarily, you know, Victor usually meets once a month. So I'm kind of there, and sort of like your Quaker Oats, you know, face of the school. And this would be, I mean, that's, you know, completely gone by the wayside this last year. And it seems to me that I might be able to think about that and, uh, you know, send that, with, just send that to Victor, and I could probably do the same thing to my church community.
Are you talking about your letter?
Whatever, no, whatever letter we get, I would just do a little preface.
Oh.
But I'm talking about just, how, how can I, as an individual, uh, stay in touch with my community? We're supposed to represent the thinking of the community, and when we're out of touch with, via the pandemic, your Safeway contact is, you know, I mean, all those usual contacts are severed, and.
You could share that link, too, the columnist link.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I do, this, I'm thinking out loud, these struck me as a couple of things I could do. Maybe there's some things that each of us can think about. How can we connect with our special community? And maybe it seems to me, take a board letter, you know, as your basic document, write a little preface for your particular community, and, you know, see that it gets out, and it continues to remind people that we exist. And I'm sure for a lot of people on Victor, you know, we've fallen completely off the, the map. Uh, and this reminds that the schools are going on, we're doing things. Uh, oh, by the way, we're underfunded, but, you know, see why we need it, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I think it's important that we keep up those contacts, and I haven't figured out a way of doing that till just now.
I think that's a great ide- great idea, John. We could all do that. So now we are at item six, Assurance of Organizational Performance and Policy Review. And the policy that we have here tonight is E4, School Engagement, which is an action item. The school board adheres to the principles of policy governance. The board has written four sets of policies, ends, executive requirements, board superintendent relationships, and governance process. The ends policies describe the student outcomes the superintendent is charged with achieving. The executive requirement policies set the parameters within which the superintendent must operate as he or she leads the district toward the expected ends. The board superintendent relationships policies describe the way in which the board will oversee the superintendent's performance, and the superintendent will support the board. The governance policies describe how the board and its individual members shall conduct business, represent the community, and relate to each other. And tonight, our, our ends policy is number four, School Engagement, and there was a monitoring report there. Um, I hope you all had an opportunity to review that. Uh, I think that it's important to note this one paragraph. Due to continued restrictions in response to COVID nineteen, we began the twenty twenty-one school year with most students engaged in remote learning within a hybrid model. I think it's important, when you talk about school engagement, to remember that under these extreme circumstances that we've all dealt with this year, all of us in our own lives, and particularly in the school community, have really restricted school engagement. Not only for staff, but for students and for community members and for parents. So as you read this monitoring report, I ask you to keep that in mind. I think it's a great report. I think, um, our superintendent did a really good job of defining um, how we dealt with school engagement throughout the year, particularly in each of the buildings. So I would entertain a motion, and actually, why is my battery running low?
Mine died.
No, no, no. Oh. Um, I, I'm, I'm hooked. I mean, I'm, I'm connected. Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve the, uh, or to, I guess, what am I gonna say, Art? How did, um, that the superintendent has, is in compliant with school engagement, E4.
So, Madam Chairman, I would like to move that we find the superintendent compliant with.
See, see what he does.
Thank you.
The precepts of E4, as, as defined, or as explained partly in the monitoring report, but also from other information that we know.
Okay. I would welcome comments or discussion.
I think this is a historical document. If anybody does a history of our school.
There it is.
I mean, this is an absolute crucial breakpoint. Uh, it'd be the, it's the educational equivalent of war. And it seems to me that the outline that is given in, in detail, the responses there are really informative with respect to how we got prepared, how, uh, our leadership team, uh, under our CEO, really met the emergency. And, uh, I'm impressed with this and think that it well represents an important turning point in our schools.
Thank you, John. Anyone else?
I, I second that.
I, I would like to share that, um, this report was a group project. Um, Dr. Dan King is, has completed his superintendent credential program and recently graduated from his program at Seattle Pacific.
Oh, all right.
Awesome.
And, um, he is, his intent is to learn more about our policy governance procedure here in North Mason during this year. So he's gonna partner with me on doing some of the reports and some of the research, and this is the first one he did, and I really appreciated his insights and input from the building level as we, you know, through email, created a report to you about where we are in this particular area this year. Well, thank you.
Thanks, Dan. It was a great monitoring resp- response. I thought it was very complete, and yet it detailed all of those issues that everyone has dealt with all year. So, um, thank you. Our school engagement response document, it's, the board, on the date shown above, received and reviewed the official internal monitoring report of the above-named policy submitted, submitted by the superintendent and superintendent-to-be, Dan King at some point. Following its review of the report, based on the information provided, the board concludes, and this is where you all come in. Interpretation of policy, the superintendent has reasonably interpreted the provisions of the ends policy. The superintendent has failed to reasonably interpret the provisions of the ends policy. Comment?
I'm coming out in favor of reason.
All right.
Yes.
Okay, and then progress toward results. The district is making reasonable and satisfactory progress toward achieving the desired results called for in the policy. And the board offers the following commendations and/or cautions. I'm looking for a response from you all.
I would like to see in there a comment that reflects that this was a, this COVID year was, I don't wanna call it a, like, on a chart, and then coming back up. Some, but there's a, it's not like a blip, cause this was a big thing, but it was something that was very different, and that there was, you know, very good and positive adjustment to it, and it's just really unknown as to, you know, where that's gonna take us and where we're gonna go from that, but I, I just think, um, we, we, you, you folks have done, you know, an excellent job trying to deal with some really serious adversity.
Here, here.
However, you can write that better than I said it.
Okay.
And I think, you know, as part of that, dealing with unknowns and adjusting to the unexpected, I mean, it seems to me that that's very important, you know, for, uh, administrative groups.
Okay, all right, we have a motion on the floor. No more discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All right, and now we are at a new policy, E6, Educational Equity.
Yeah, this is not something we have done since I have been here, adopt a new ends policy, but I have one for you. And I would like to present it tonight and come back to, um, consideration of the adoption of this policy after we've had some time to mull it over and think about it. Uh, this is a very important policy for us to take at this time, and we spent, as an administrative team, a lot of time researching, looking at, um, other existing policies in the state. So even though this is a requirement, we do not have a recommended policy yet, but we need it to be in place as we start a new school year. And so we've looked at best practice around the state and other places. We've looked at the definitions of what are expected and, and we've really soul-searched about how do we best serve and meet the needs of all of our kids, kids, so that we meet the definition of equity, which is that each child gets whatever that child needs to be successful. Um, not everybody gets the same, but everybody gets what they need. And so, um, we, like I said, we've worked really hard. I think this is an outstanding, uh, result. But I would like you to have more than just the few minutes in the meeting to mull and consider it. So if you have had the opportunity to check through it already, if you have questions that we can answer tonight, so that you can, um, think more and be prepared. Tentatively, Jackie and I have saved a place on the calendar for next year's first report on this agenda, which would be in April. Uh, we do have a plan in place related to both our learning recovery plan that we submitted and was approved by the state, and to the implementation of an equity polit- equity policy that we will be examining school data from a variety of sources multiple times a year through a lens of equity, through a lens of the students that we've identified who are most in need of support, and making sure that we're doing the right thing so that each child gets what they need to succeed. And so by the time we get to April, we will have had multiple database conversations and opportunities to adjust our practice, so that what I am able to report on will be real work and real results or not, um, that show how we're moving forward to support kids in this very important way.
Now, is this something that the state mandated, or is this something that, uh, we've initiated?
There will be a mandate. Um, there was a, a requirement from the federal government in our, um, learning recovery plan to have in place a district education, equity policy, and an equity practice for examining data. And, um, and so we did put those things in place. We are asking the board to adopt this policy to ensure that we are, um, moving forward to best serve all of our kids and to make sure that we create a school district that doesn't have hidden, uh, barriers for some kids and not for others.
So we're ahead of the curve?
We're trying.
Well, I think that, you know, that's, I think I'm right about that, and I think this is commendable. I've looked it over. I've, we're all hearing about this in a very ideolog- ideologized form. I've been reviewing my knowledge of history and have found it lacking with respect just come, I feel I'm just coming to grips with our, the meaning of institutional racism and other things of that nature. This is a cool report. It weighed, turns down the heat, and as far as I've, uh, there was a great program on, um, David Bernstein interviews, has a, his program on, what is it, Sundays? Uh, where he interviews, you know, various people in the news, Bill Gates, et cetera, et cetera. This last time he introduced, he interviewed, um, um, the other, uh, Henry, the, the Gates at Harvard that does all the black history. I'm blocking on his name for a moment. Uh, I got his book right after the program. I haven't finished reading it, but I'm reading a number of things that are converging on the same point. And they're pointing out systematic failures, not a matter of your attitude, my attitude, kumbaya, let's all get together, but how we're put together legally and policy-wise. And from what I could tell from my preliminary readings on this, and I don't pretend to be an expert on it, and then I look at this policy, wow, uh, it seems to me that there's, what I'm reading about history and the points that they're raised by this policy seem to come together. So I think that this is a, I think this is a real heads-up. I think we all need to take a look at this. And I really commend, uh, uh, our CEO, Dana, for being ahead of the curve on this, because this is a very important thing. And just like the budget, this is another thing that could go terribly awry if we're not right on the, on the dime with respect to communicating in cool language that nevertheless locates this on the map, what we're doing and why we're doing it. Because I think the reasons for doing it are really well spelled out in, uh, this preliminary plan that we've got. If I knew more, I would offer any kind of different criticisms. But one of the irritations I have with use superintendent Rosenbach is I find so little to criticize. It really bothers me. But I think this, uh, this looks really, uh, like we're getting ahead of the curve, and I encourage everybody to study it.
Does this, um, connect with the Senate bill fifty forty-four, or is that, that's what will follow later? Or will it have anything to do with this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I'm, I'm really pleased with this. It's a really meaty policy, and there are so many bullets in here that are totally measurable. So.
Absolutely, and it does seem really long, but we went through it repeatedly with the administrative team to say, is it doable to report on all this? Because
Yeah.
we wanna make sure that we've been very clear in what we're committing to, that we are committing to being a school district that is a welcoming place for all students and a place where all students individually have the opportunity to be as successful as they can. This is, it's very important for us to lay that out, and it's very important to follow through with it. I think our graduation this year was a beautiful example of students who are feeling welcomed, students who have come from different backgrounds, who feel welcomed and are able to be themselves in our school community. And that doesn't happen everywhere, and I'm very. And that doesn't happen everywhere, and I'm very proud of North Mason, but we have, we have improvement, we have wa- ways to go. But this, this is a way for us to call ourselves and hold ourselves accountable for doing the best we can.
Absolutely.
For our kids, and I think it, it needs to happen.
I would like to make a short, uh, comment about it, um, after, I had read it earlier, and I wanted to make sure I had my, my Ps and Qs here. Um, it is very well-written, it is clean.
Here, here.
Um, it's, um, if I'm just a community member, um, just eighteen years old and still have no idea what this is, it's understandable. I have seen other districts write this same thing, um, recently, and it was very hard to read, and people were very mad, and actually mad about the very thing that it was opposing, that they were opposing as well, but they couldn't understand it because of the way it was written, and it was really terrible. And I think that that's why that theirs did not work out, and they'll work on that. But this, um, right out of the gate, is clean and good, so I would, thank you.
Well, and I particularly endorse in, ensuring student voice is viewed as critical and incorporated routinely in decision-making. So it's a great policy, if it were on here for action, I have a feeling it would probably have been.
Yeah, I just wanna add.
It was individually, originally, but I didn't want to rush you.
I think that's smart. I would like, I still wanna read more over and over, but I appreciate it, I appreciate it.
That's great.
I just wanna add to what I said before, that this is another candidate for a board letter. I mean, it seems to me this would be, and would be, and we'd be getting out, uh, I mean, I think the budget one is, is a crucial one. Uh, the most important, but I mean, they're, they're kinda equally important, because there's been such a bad press. I've had one constituent that has already asked me for my attitude, you know, for the bill that you're, you're talking about. And I've had a preliminary exchange, you know, with him, uh, about this, uh, trying to cool down, you know, the ideology, talk about the actual, uh, needs. Um, but I think that this is again, another thing we need to get out in front of the community on to cool it down and explain the importance of the policy. And I think that example of graduation is.
And, and this policy is not about anybody's political ideology.
No.
Mine, or anyone else's. It is about the purpose of public education.
Here, here.
Public education was started in this country to ensure that everybody was prepared to be a participating, successful citizen. This policy holds us accountable to make sure that every student gets the support they need to get what they need from school to be able to fulfill that expectation.
And it even allows us to correct ourselves before anybody complains. I mean, we can see from our own data, you know, where we're showing, uh, falling short, should that be the case.
All right, um, if there's no more on that?
I have a little more.
Okay.
Um, I'm, thank you for not making us vote on this. Um, I would probably vote for it. Um, I'm in favor of all the sort of stuff that everyone has talked about. However, I only read through it once, and I didn't have time to get into deeper, and I would really like to get into it deeper, both from the reading point of view, but I would also like to have a discussion on it where we could, that's all we focus on, almost like having, you know, a special board session on that. I don't know if the rest of you feel the same, but I would like to flesh out more of that, because this will become one of our board policies.
Here, here.
Not a school, district, nuts and bolts, maintenance, or what do you call it?
Yup.
Operational policy. And so I think we should have a lot more to put our teeth into on this.
Are you suggesting that we have a special board meeting?
I think so, but I, you know, if you guys don't wanna have that, then, you know, okay, I'll just be reading a lot.
No, I'm not opposed to that at all, I'm just thinking to myself, when would we do that? Would it be maybe a five-thirty special study session before the next?
Yeah, special study strikes me.
Are you all in agreement with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, all right. Okay. We don't have a policy review, because we didn't have any policies last month, so we're at adjournment, good of the order. Um, anything from the board to add?
I think this was an important meeting. I think we did, we've touched on some really important topics this morning, this, this, this evening.
This morning.
Yeah, well, who cares? Anyway, we're having fun. Uh, and, um, it was, I felt good being here this evening, that we're doing something important.
Thanks. Anybody else? Dana?
I would, I would like to acknowledge that today in our country, something very historic happened. And our president signed a bill that made Juneteenth a federal holiday.
Here, here.
Commemorating, um, the, the freedom from slavery of the last large group of slaves in Texas. And at the end of the Civil War, and, and later than, than should have been. But it was very important time to, to take, uh, to acknowledge, it's very important to acknowledge everything that is connected to that. Um, unfortunate, and it, it is now a federal holiday.
Tomorrow.
As of three-thirty this afternoon, Eastern Time. Unfortunately, for us as a district, that was not time to be able to respond, to make an adjustment in our school calendar. Um, but, and tomorrow will be a school day, the last day of school, but I think it's, it's very important that we acknowledge that. That's very important to, to remember and to help our children remember. And as we move forward, certainly it will be a part of our calendar decisions. I also think it's important to relate that in Washington State, we are not required to observe all federal holidays as a non-workday. So there are other federal holidays in the calendar that we have children at school. So for that reason, and because, um, you know, taking into consideration less than twenty-four hours' notice to our families and the potential disruption, we did not adjust our school calendar for this year. Um, but we are very pleased to support this new holiday, um, that, that gives us all a chance to acknowledge a very important time in our history.
Thank you. All right, the board's self-assessment of the meeting. Director Shepherd-Bull will process the board's self-assessment.
Absolutely. Um, so general meeting behavior, I will rate us as satisfactory across the board, and I'll just pick out a few to list out. Um, indeed, the agenda was well-planned to focus on the real work of the board. We had deliberations and decision-making processes held in public. The participation was balanced, and all participated, no one dominated. And I believe work was conducted in an atmosphere of trust and openness, but I would rate us satisfactory across all of those, um, items. Uh, as for governance principles review, um, the following principles were followed, yes, I would say. Um, board actions occurred at the policy level rather than the, at the operational level. Um, the board minimized time spent monitoring past performance. The board routinely dedicated time to reviewing and improving its own process. The board does follow an annual calendar based on a plan for doing its work. The board chair helped the board efficiently conduct the meeting. And the board did support the superintendent in any reasonable interpretation of its policies. So I do rate all of those governance principles with a yes, that they were followed. And overall, I rate us as satisfactory.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Our next board meeting date is July fifteenth, and we will convene at five-thirty PM for the special work-study session, which will be open to the public, um, and then reconvene at six-thirty for the regular board meeting.
Great.
And that's it.
All right.
Thank you.
Welcome to.